This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Weekly, our host. Available by GoToMeeting also. We have an agenda in front of us. We have motion approved agenda.
So moved.
Motion second?
Oh, second.
I'm not sure who you just said first. Sidney?
I was Sidney.
That's fine.
All papers are high?
Aye, aye.
Motion passed. Through the minutes of April 30th meeting?
Last week's meeting, when that petition was out, I said I wanted the title of the petition in the minutes and the names in the minutes. And they're not in the minutes, so I want to move to table the minutes until that takes place.
You know, there's been other times there's been petitions and they've never been read, they've never been in the minutes, they're just so noted that there was a petition and it was in the minutes. So why is it different this time?
I would code 331.504 says duties of clerk to the board. Record of all actions taken and the complete text of the motions, resolutions, amendments, and ordinance is not adopted by the board. On the request of a supervisor present at the meeting, the minutes shall include a record of the vote of each supervisor on any question before the board.
What's that?
What's that in the code? I requested it to be there.
So every, every meeting should have word by word, the whole?
I requested that the names be in the minutes as was read at the meeting. Some of them were difficult for her to read, which is understandable, so then she just said the address, so then I'm going to add the address, but... So I've made a motion to table the minutes.
Which code does that? Because I have code 21.3 here.
That's same code. 331.504.
Because 21.3 says each government body shall keep minutes of all meetings showing date, time, place, the members present, location, action taken at each meeting. The minutes shall show the result of each vote taken, information sufficient to indicate the votes of each member present.
Yeah, well, I'm reading this, but I've made a motion to table the minutes.
Motion, is there a second? No, second. Motion second to table the minutes, follow real call?
Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Mike.
No.
Mark.
Aye. Motion passes, table the minutes. County Attorney General discussion.
Just on that note, it seems to me... It says it's not my job to get involved in policy debates, and I'm not going to, but I get involved in legal issues, especially if they affect county, it seems to me that there's nothing wrong with those being in the minutes. Would it be illegal if that was not? Probably not. But if you have a board member, could be any of you, that says, hey, I want this in the minutes, it seems to me, put it in the minutes. You know, and it may be that sometimes not all that's in the minutes. Okay, fine. But, you know, this is, this is a public government meeting. It's an open meeting. If... It seems to me if somebody signs a petition and taking this position or any position, and they presumably know what they're signing for, somebody's asking them to sign, they know why they're doing it and stuff, and it becomes a public document, I don't, I'm not aware of anything that says that person has a right to not have their name public. If you're going to participate in government, gotta take your knocks like everyone else. So that means somebody may criticize you, some may not, that's the way it works. So whether, you know, you can spend minutes, hours arguing about some of this stuff that I think is absolutely trivial, nonsensical, or you can just, you know, say, okay, this is what's transpiring at the meeting, there's a petition being read, this person says, well, I would like to know who's submitting that. I think if, then if somebody, you know, if a board member says, read those names, I think that's fair game. And if somebody says, I want that in the minutes, yeah, put it in. It'd be no different than I'm sitting here talking now. Doesn't mean Rachel takes down word for word everything that I said. Be impossible unless you're recording the meeting. But, and I don't know if it's, if it's... She may write down more of what you guys say than what I say because it's your meeting. But the point is, there's going to be varying degrees to which Rachel or any, Oliver or clerk is going to be able to, to write things down. That, that's why the law's not pinned on it. But at the same time, if I were reading through the minutes and I said, oh, wait a minute, I made this comment, I would like that comment to be in the minutes. And if I were to say, please put it in the minutes, I think the prudent thing would be say, well, put it in the minutes, if it happened, right? Now, you might say, somebody might say, I don't remember you saying that, I don't think you said that. Well, I did say it. Well, then go back, watch the meeting, ask to be the technology and say, oh, yeah, you did say it. Okay, put it in the minutes. So I didn't plan on coming here to talk about this this morning, but it seems like sometimes things get a little heated and argumentative about things, and you absolutely don't need to get heated or argumentative about, I don't know. Anyway, that's my, I was gonna, I had, I didn't have a whole lot to talk about anyway. It's been a busy couple of weeks, it's gonna be another busy couple.
So if we put every name in the minutes, when you put in the two papers, it costs so much per line. I guess we have enough money to spend.
Well, I don't know, and I'm not, see, I'm not saying whether, you know, I'm not saying whether it's expensive, whether it's too expensive. You know, I don't have any control of that, you know? Newspapers charge, I mean, I gotta pay for stuff all the time, and I think, yeah, I wish I didn't have to pay for that. But, and, you know, if I'm wrong, which is entirely possible, I have people, including my wife, remind me constantly how often I am wrong. This might be one of those situations, if I am, then somebody let me know. But it, maybe I'll take a second look at it when I'm done here. I didn't anticipate this being an issue this morning, and I realize I kind of inserted myself into it, but I thought I needed, but... So I'll, I'll take a, I'll take a second look, but it just, you know, anyway, you know my viewpoints.
I find it odd that anybody would, anybody sitting here would have a problem with the stuff that happens in the meeting being in the minutes, which just seems kind of strange to me. What happens here? Put it in the minutes, supervisor wants to be in the minutes, transparency is what happened. It's not that we're making anything up.
No, I just, if they've been in practice in the past, I just don't know why things all of a sudden got changed since.
That's fine, you want it, it'll be it. You know, it says... It's a new place.
Do you have anything else for us today?
Pretty long minutes.
I'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here to be the sheriff here today, Department Head discussion. Any Department Head? Questioning, comment?
Rachel, I had Healthy Harvest contact us, contacting me in regards to if they got funded in the new budget. And I, they were in the budget.
Yeah.
They did, correct, okay.
I have a little something. I was informed by Aaron Murphy last week. Mr. Murphy, on Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors voted to approve the 2024 Mitchell County Urban Renewal Plan update. Resolution 1215-24, the measure passed on a 3-2 vote of the board. The 2024 Urban Renewal Plan Amendment was drafted and presented by Ron Fiskus and Kathy Showalter, Showalter, owners of Planscape Partners. The total expenditure of county funds under this proposal exceeds $4 million. During the hearing and prior to the vote, Supervisor Todd Bryan spoke in support of Urban Renewal Amendment 1215-24, prepared by Ron Fiskus, Kathy Showalter, owners of Planscape Partners. A question of possible conflict of interest exists between Supervisor Bryan and Planscape Partners owner Ron Fiskus and Kathy Showalter. Under Chapter 15A.2 of the Iowa, of the 2022 Iowa Code and Iowa Administration Code 497-1.4, conflict of interest guidelines are also discussed on page 14 in the manual of the County Supervisors of Iowa, published by the Iowa State Association of Counties. Prior to the vote, Supervisor Bryan made the following statement. I have been in touch with Ron and Kathy over the last week to week and a half. I have confidence in them. We all make mistakes, we're not perfect, I believe they'll do a good job. This isn't their first rodeo. They've been in Mitchell County, Osage, and multiple areas. So I as, I have family involved with them for 30 years, and I think they'll do a good job. There are questions that need to be answered regarding the type of involvement Bryan has maintained with Fiskus and Showalter over the last 30 years, the past 30 years. Have there been financial transactions between these two parties during the past 30 years? Certainly, Fiskus and Showalter benefit financially by the board approving the plan they proposed to Mitchell, for Mitchell County. What other coronary, coronary benefit might Bryan, Fiskus, and Showalter enjoy because of the information of the proposal? What is the scope of any personal relationship between, maintained between the parties over the past 30 years? Supervisor Bryan had at least one conversation, possibly more, during the week, two, week and a half prior to the vote on April 30th. What are the details of these conversations? Supervisor Bryan was quick to brush aside missteps Fiskus and Showalter made in preparation of the proposal, why? Under Iowa Administration Code 497-1.4B and C, Supervisor Bryan had a duty to inform the board of conflict of interest and recuse himself from the discussion and vote on Resolution 1215-24. The public has a right to expect impartial action by elected officers on matters of public policy. This is especially true when voting to spend over $4 million in local property tax dollars. Supervisor Bryan cast a deciding affirmative vote on the resolution before the board. Therefore, the vote approving Resolution 1215-24 ought to be nullified until the thorough investigation is completed and findings presented to the board regarding this possible conflict of interest. Your prompt attention and investigation into this matter will be appreciated and provide transparency and the answer to the public as well as other board members. Unsigned. I'd like that, Doc, you added in the minutes. My response back, I guess just to Aaron Murphy because it's unsigned, I have no personal relationship with Planscape Partners. My commitment, my comment was, my dad worked for the city of Osage for 42 years, and Planscape Partners worked for and still do the city of Osage. I've been a resident of Osage and Mitchell County my entire life and watched and learned how they both have grown and become a great place to live and retire. Planscape Partners have been a big part of that. As in talking with them last week, week and a half, was about their plan that they put together for us, and I had several questions. I believe when you're working for Mitchell County and that amount of money, you ask questions and make sure the plan is what we want to, want to have moving forward. This kind of tears me up that somebody would do that. I want to ask, Mark, when you worked with Triple E, did you have discussions with them? And, and what, what you wanted for a building, what they wanted for a building? And talked back and forth?
Just had them give a call.
Jim, did you talk with Pops Escavating on things for the county, county home and back and forth? Did you receive the letter like this?
I did not receive a letter, I guess I talked to Pops for a project that they were going to do.
Did you receive anything like this for conflict of interest, for getting quotes and... How about with Hinko, did you get something like this, Mike?
No, I'm not friends with them, you know?
Yeah, I really find this, this, I, and not to sign. What do you know about it?
What do I know about it? Well, you're the one who made the statement, said they were friends of your family, and some people were concerned about it, so...
Unsigned? Enough sad.
Enough sad, yeah.
This is just, this is just uncoming, unbearable. I just, I mean, why would you...
You're the one that said they were friends of your family, and a lot of, this is all recorded, it goes out in the public, public hears that.
Was it, was it friends of the family or a relationship?
They said friends of the family, they've been friends of the family for 30 years, so, you know, that's a...
I have family involved with them over 30 years. That's my dad that has worked, worked for the city for 42 years. You're just taking things and putting them in your, in, in your mouth and letting them come out.
I did develop that, I, do you think I could write that letter? I can't.
Well, why unsigned? Why didn't you come to me and say, hey, so and so wrote this letter, but didn't want to sign it? How, if he prosecutes me, how's he know what to do?
He ain't prosecuting, it's just a matter of conflict of interest. If you're friends of the family, you should retain from voting.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
I don't know, just, I, I got taxpayers coming to me with items and I pass them on.
Stop!
The legal issue, so I'm gonna get, number one, I, I, I don't know the complete relationship among everybody. I, an inquiry came to me, so I thought, I'll check that out. I did. Based on the information that I've received, could it be wrong? Could be wrong, any investigation could be wrong, but based on what I know, there's no legal conflict of interest. Now, being friends with somebody does not make something a conflict of interest. I mean, public can decide whether they think there's too close of a relationship. If they think it's, then they can make their voices heard, they can vote for the next election, they can kick somebody out of office. But being friends with somebody is not a legal conflict of interest. Now, I'm not saying that there wouldn't be situations where it couldn't be, but from what I understand, in this situation, I don't see that there is one. Especially when you're in a community like this, it's a little bit hard to not have relationships of some nature with a lot of different people. But I see no legal conflict of interest. Being friends, and I don't, I don't know how close, I mean, from what I understand, I don't think Mr. Bryan is, you know, particularly, I don't think, from what I understand, from the information I've received, you know, I don't think he's going out to eat with them every night, I don't think there's like money exchanging hands, and I don't think he's financially benefiting personally from this, from what I know. And I don't see a legal conflict of interest, so... With that, I just, let's just let that, I guess you guys discuss what you want to discuss. But do I see a legal conflict of interest or not? And...
Well, I just want to add that when I get complaints from people, I follow up with them. I talked to Rich this morning about one, and anytime I get them, my follow up was, who I feel it needs to go to, and no, I did not write that letter. But taxpayer brought it to me and wanted to follow it up on, so what am I supposed to do? I gotta do my job too, you know? Whether somebody likes it or not, somebody comes to me, I'm gonna follow up with them. That's all I got to say, so... I'm just doing my job, I guess.
Any other Department Head discussion? County Engineer?
Real brief. Insurance company came yesterday to review our salt shed, so I'm still getting some quotes yet for complete construction of a new one, since the one we have is probably no longer going to be usable as far as the foundation and everything, it's been, since 1998, pushed up against salt, the wood's kind of starting to rot, and kind of band-aiding it together for a while, so we'll get some quotes. I know one was supposed to get one last week, probably see one this week. I want to check out one more type of structure. The two quotes I'm getting now are for the hoop style buildings we already had, but I know Wheeler Lumber makes a different type of a system too, so I'll see what they have also. But other than that, next week I'll bring a professional services agreement for some hydraulic reviews or some hydraulic calculations for hiring to be, you guys do some hydraulics on those two indigo bridges, because we've got a residence real close to one of those little bridges. We want to make sure we don't, we get the right sized structures and hydraulics to go through those, so that we can get a, they're gonna just deliver us the hydraulic data with survey and then kind of give us a heads up on what type of structures we can put in there without getting too, too involved. We can probably do, if it's, if it's structures we can handle, we'll put them in ourselves. So we're just gonna try to do this low key, but just to get a PSA, a professional services agreement in, so that they can run the hydraulics for us to make sure we don't get too, it requires a more detailed survey than we can use with our staff and our equipment. So we'll get that, and I'll bring that to you next week. Other than that, that's all I've got for you this morning. We will, I don't know if you guys drove by, we've been trying to update some of our concrete aprons on our shop, main shop here, the, a lot of the approaches have settled, and they're just not, not draining water, so we're building some bigger approaches. It helps with washing equipment off, keeping the shed a little bit drier. And then, oh, there's one more thing I thought of, but can't remember now, so, put a little concrete work there, so... And then we, you will see an invoice. A few years back, we bought a new tool chest, tried to be efficient with the dollars, and the drawers are falling out of it now, so we can't get the slides as quickly as once. We upgraded to a, a new toolbox, and it's expensive, but I think it'll last a lot longer than the one we bought. So you'll see it, it's, I think, it was a, don't freak out, but it's, it's, it's no different than buying a plotter. I mean, it's a tool that we need, we bought a $9,000 toolbox. It's a big tool chest, and it'll, it'll take the, take the abuse that we're gonna give it when the guys are all working in the shed, so... It's a, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty good size, but it's heavy, it's heavier duty than the one we had, and in time, we'll find the slides from the old one and maybe hand that one off to their shop to have, but... Just so you know, you'll see that coming through the bills, so, but it's a tool we need, so... That's all I've got for you this morning. All right?
Five minutes for the public hearing. Use the, you could do the... This special is gonna take longer than five minutes, I'm sure.
Town and Country, we can do that later.
What's that?
The Town and Country?
Yeah, that's how it ends, right?
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right. All right, discussion and possible action on County Country Days funding request. San Antonio County Country Days is looking for $500 for their event. Must be like June 15th, Aprils. That's what they've been giving them the last few years, correct, Rachel?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to provide $500.
Second?
Second.
Motion second? Any other discussion?
Real call, Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye. We're gonna do those by resolution, Rachel, or are we gonna?
Yeah, I got it here.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Was it in our packet?
Yes. Resolution number 1217-24. This contribution, agreement between Mitchell County and Board of Supervisors and San Antonio Community Chamber is effective May 7th, 2024. Whereas San Antonio Community Chamber has requested $500 for funding from Mitchell County Board of Supervisors, this funding request will be used to help offset and bring in rides, entertainment, and activities. Now, therefore, it will be resolved that Mitchell County Board of Supervisors will contribute $500 to San Antonio Community Chamber. May 7th, 2024, the passes? Yeah, there it passed.
Thank you, Rachel.
Resolution 1217-24.
Yeah, thank you.
And we got three minutes, three minutes. Are meetings attended or?
I had none.
I had none.
I had a county social service meeting, I went to, yeah, there was a presentation from STIGMA associated with substance abuse disorder. That's from a lady, Lila, from Fair Ridge, prevention specialist. Talked about it, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so there's some area events and activities gonna be. I think Wednesday, there's a walk, starting up probably health building at noon, and going, I think, to that city hall, now to the hospital and back, I believe, if anybody wants to participate in that. And Friday, June 14th, there's a school, something to do with the school with the youth. And that's pretty much it, so, that's all.
I had the same social service meeting, and June 14th is a walk?
No, this Wednesday's a walk. To go, I was going down to the 14th, June, is that, you remember?
That was another walk.
Another walk, is that what it was?
I think, I think that one is like not this Thursday, but next Thursday.
The 16th, and they asked you to wear green.
Oh, it's a 16th, sorry. Anyway, 16th, I'll be gone.
That's all I had to say.
Don't forget to wear your green.
I had a fair board meeting, which is pretty much going over our list. A lot of things are getting, coming in, contracts, and they're gonna start on five, they're gonna put five new pedestals for camping on the very south end, pass on the south of the driveway on the east side. And I believe they're all full for this fair. Even the ones that haven't been put in yet, so...
That's good.
Yeah. That's it.
One amendment.
One amendment. I needed a couple more alms in there, didn't I?
We thought, "Coats yourselves" for a minute?
Do you have any when they're in? Yeah, I can deal with that. Borderline Buildings LLC, Northeast Side, 5059 Addison Avenue, Riceville. Borderline Buildings LLC, Southwest Side, 3327 500th Street, Riceville. Iowa Big Company, 3405 Kirkwood Avenue, Osage. Iowa Big Company, 3405 Kirkwood Avenue, Osage. Prison One Site, 259 420th Street, Osage. Prison Two Site, 2699 490th Street, Osage. Prison Three Site, 2281 410th Street, Osage. And Prison Four Site, 2552 410th Street, Osage.
Thank you very much. So it's nine o'clock, open the public meeting at nine o'clock. Is this published in the proper newspapers and available at the auditor's office?
Yes.
Any oral or written comments received from the supervisors or auditor?
I had none.
No.
Nothing.
None for me?
None for me.
None.
What was the public meeting at 9:01?
Like I said, I just did have a question of the, we'd be out of the public hearing, but Rachel, was the cordos bond payment taken out of tip this? Or are we doing that now?
Yeah, with this, we added that in here.
Okay.
So that's the, I think another 260,000 is what we added to the tip fund for that.
All right, thank you.
So approved appropriations resolution. We have resolution 1216 dash 24. Whereas it's desired to make appropriations for the various departments since per budget amendment at this time. Therefore be resolved that Board of Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa, that these changes be made in appropriation expenditures. Increase $600 to the community service department. Increase 3,300 to sanitation department. Increase 30,000 to home health department. Increase 7,000 to courthouse department. Increase 265,000 to non-departmental department. And the revenues are increased 426,000 to the children department. Increase 18,000 to the sanitaryian department. Increase 30,000 to home health department. And increase 486,600 to non-departmental department. You have a motion to approve this resolution?
Some of them.
Your motion is our second.
Our second.
Any other discussion?
Bro call, Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Sydney.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
And.
Can make this one closer.
We got a few minutes to wait for master matrix. Well, we can do the second judicial district department corrections.
Let's go. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mark Fordman, I'm supervisor at Mason City Office. So primarily my purpose here this morning was to do some information sharing with the board. Previously, we had an advisory board that approved our policies and a lot, basically everything that we did. And now we have been absorbed by the state and so we are a state entity. And so, like I said, the purpose of me being here is basically just to share some information with the board today. Currently in Mitchell County, we have 50 clients on probation or parole supervision, 30 males, 19 females. We have clients on probation, interstate compact, interstate compact probation and parole and special sentence parole. Primarily, it looks like most of the supervision levels for Mitchell County are low. Low risk supervision, most common offense would be drug possession or OWI. Higher risk, we have 10 clients currently and the most common offense type for that would be assault of some sort. Currently, we're still offering treatment services as far as domestic violence is concerned, sex offender treatment programming, moral recognition therapy and individual counseling. We have a psychologist on staff as well. Since COVID, we were doing a lot more virtual delivery of services, not only with individual appointments with clients, but setting up groups as well, which was beneficial to us as far as people that could not come to us, the office, because of transportation needs, which is really common with our clientele. They cannot make it to appointments or go to other places like mental health or substance abuse appointments. And so this made it a lot more easy for them to participate and we appreciated that as well. When I attended the Board of Supervisors in Saro, Georgia, there was only three supervisors, so I just kind of planned for that. So if you would, the larger packet that I have for you is, you're welcome. Just some information about us in the district, if you would just like to share those, please. And then I also have some information regarding Mitchell County, like I said, which is more specific to this hearing. So if you would please share these, otherwise I would have made more copy of these, I'm sorry about that, you. Does the board have anything, any questions or anything?
I wonder, you want to, you want to speak a little bit to the tablets, does it get used for helping people?
We started that program in the prison, so we had a group of people that, the tablets are basically, they're set up so they don't receive internet and what is programmed on them are different things like how to budget, basically, daily living skills, substance abuse treatment, program exercises, mental health, coping skills, that type of thing. And so we introduced those first into the prison in Fort Dodge and then also the one in Newton now. So we're trying to expand the program. And the purpose of that is to help the incarcerated individuals not only get some help as far as what they need, as far as is going to help them when they re-enter society, but establishing a contact with our agency because they are going to be on supervision. So having a name to connect to that face, the parole or probation officer that's going to be supervising the case. And so that was another advantage of us doing it. It is, it made a deeper connection with the people that we receive on a daily basis. So we're trying to, it's starting, we're having a lot of success with it. We're trying to expand it to other institutions right now.
Isn't it recognized by the federal government too or something that, a plan or statewide or something?
We might be getting some grants from them as far as that is concerned and when all the money that we get, I guess that we just expanded the program, so. Yeah.
So I'm on that board, so I have some questions also.
Okay.
Do we contribute to second judicial? Rachel, do you recall?
I don't.
I don't recall either as far as that. And I didn't know how the state, since the state kind of took some things over, I wasn't sure how the funding was going to work and.
Yeah, all of, it's, everything, our hiring, our policies, everything goes through Department of Administrative Services.
Which, which is the state.
Exactly.
Yeah. Do you see the trend going up? They have more?
More.
More clients or more people or?
Um, not, I mean, I, hopefully more lower risk clients, but not, I mean, it stayed pretty steady for a while. And so the push during 2019, 2020 was to identify the people in the, in the institutions that were lower risk and try to get them out because we had overcrowding at the time. And so the governor used that time to try to push us to get, identify the people that were able to receive community supervision and be successful and then reduce the overcrowding in prison. So as a result of that, our clientele went up, so, yeah.
Are the prisons still crowded?
They're a bit over capacity.
Yeah, I heard.
We're still trying to.
One meeting after the statement said that if somebody's going in, somebody's got to come out because there's not room.
Hopefully, hopefully three out for everyone in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board? Okay, as I said, I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Obviously, we miss having a representative on the board and how we used to function. So if you, any of you would like to come over to the office in Mason City, we're at 211 19th Street, Southwest. If you know where Plum Supply is in Mason City. Right next door, going towards Clear Lake. Come in, ask for myself, Mark Fordman, or Rebecca Barrett. We are the supervisors and we'll be more than happy to show you guys, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Yep.
Well, we got five minutes, we got two seconds left. With the. Do you have enough time for discussion on urban renewal plan amendment funding? That'd be.
I'm sorry.
You can start, I guess.
I decided into the agenda to start the conversation of where to get the money from. Last week, it was brought up about doing an internal loan. So I put the fund status summary on your guys' desk, it wasn't in Fridays, it printed for already expenses of transactions were done, that's why it says fund out of balance. I think all the supervisors, you received this report from me, the other one, this is a detailed one though. So to kind of explain, our office does everything by funds. Where the treasurer, they get all the money in, and it's like this big pot. So in this pot, it has all these different funds in there and she gives it up to a different banks to get the interest rates and whatnot. So maybe on her end, it looks like we have this money, but looking here, I don't know where we would be able to take money from. There's a lot, but of different, of, a lot, there's a lot of funds, but we can't touch them. You have cities in here, you have like the carpenter sewer, you have assessor, EMA, E911, all the drains. There's a couple recorder funds, share funds. But I just wanted to give an update that I don't think that it's possible to do an internal loan.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, okay? So I just, I also looked at the fund status reports and again, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, but this is a question. So when I go back to June of 22, 23, our funds, fund balance was 12.5 million. July, 11.2 million. August, 13.6 million. And these are dollar amounts that are carrying over from one month to the next. Then in September, when we get our property tax revenue, it bounces to 21.3 million. It was $7 million of property tax that came into the system. But we already had 13.6 million dollars in the funds. We had more in the funds than what the property tax came into, which I don't quite understand why we have so much fund balance. So into the next month, October, 16.4 million. November, 15.7 million. December, 15 million. January, 14.8 million. February, 14.6 million. Again, in March, when we get funded with property tax, we got 9.8 million in property tax. But we had 14 million, 14.6 million in the fund from the previous month to carry over. Now in April, we have 19.6 million. So we have a lot of fund balance that just keeps growing over from month to month. And the savings account that Shannon showed me, it was, it's never under $4 million. Ranges between $4 and $5 million. It's never been under $4 million for four years. So the, the simple question in my mind, which I don't understand the whole thing, that's your job, but are we, are we just, is that savings account, that $4 million savings account simply obligated to, for a carryover balance each month of the funds, which never goes under $11 million? I mean, we have a lot of month to month carryover balance. That's what I'm not understanding. I don't want to interrupt him. That's all, I just, I just don't understand.
Come back.
Sure.
Hold that thought.
Sure.
9:15. Public hearing at 9:15. Was this published in the property newspaper and available at the auditor's office?
Yes.
Any oral or written comments received from supervisors or auditor?
I had none.
No.
None.
None?
None. No, I talked to Mike a little bit, maybe he can talk about it, he went out with the DNR, I, and how they scored it.
Yeah, well, so I went out there and looked a little, looked over the property. Need a score of 440, correct?
Correct.
With all the measurements and everything, scored 500, which is excellent for a, a, a property like that or a big truck saw. Yeah, so it should, as far as the DNR is concerned and I'm concerned, it's scores do reflect colors. Anything you want to add or?
No, I was just here to answer questions if there's anything.
I did have one question about, and I talked to Greg on that. To get to that, he's going, going to his yard, right? Just in, because I didn't know if there's a field drive on the north end on that blacktop.
No, they, yeah, you have to go back around the silage bunker and around behind the trees to get back to the new building. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's no additional road access or anything to get there.
Okay, so that's, that's where he's going to.
Yeah, there's two buildings up there, they're, I'm just in line with them, on the, on the west side of the property.
Okay.
Building side.
Use the same driveway.
Use the same driveway, yep. And then he's going to get rid of an older building there, which, I put up a machine to the way it sounded maybe.
Any other questions?
I think it's, the older building looks like it could have some runoff when it rains, where the new one will be, keep everything contained a lot better, I would.
The, the outside one is an open lot and going to get rid of that. And then the new one will be confinement, so there's no outside access to it, so there's no runoff.
Correct. That looks like a good deal.
Something else? What was the public hearing at 9:17? Discussion on possible action on River View Livestock Master Matrix? Is there a motion to approve this?
And I love to make a motion since I was the one out there, or not? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve it. River View Livestock Master Matrix.
Your motion is our second. That's second. Any other discussion?
Bro call, Jim.
Hi.
Sydney.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Todd.
Motion passed. So we'll go back to the discussion on urban renewal plan amendment funding?
Yeah, I'll just, I understand, we're just, my, my misunderstanding, my lack of knowledge and not understanding why we have so much of a carryover balance month to month with the fund balances never under $11 million. And we don't have $4 million to do an internal loan with. If we don't, we don't, but I just don't quite understand that.
I think it's all allocated to all these different budgets, so you'd have to take a piece of every one and you're not allowed to do that, so.
But, but it's unusual that we pressed a resolution a couple of weeks ago so the treasurer could have more room to put more money in the banks because that amount of money is continually climbing. And we had to have a resolution so she could put more in the banks. Why is our month to month fund balance continually growing? And then there's no room for an internal loan in it. I'm just not understanding that.
I'd say big shares in the tip fund, we can't borrow from the tip fund, the tip fund pays back wherever we borrow it from. Okay, so like our general basic, we have $4 million in there. We need that to carry us through to September. We need that to carry us through to September. American Rescue Plan Act still shows two hundred and twenty-two thousand. That's gonna be expensed here as soon as H R A P is done. General supplemental is one point two million. We need that for our normal, our insurance and elections and the courts that come out of there. Our opioid money, we know we can't touch. Rural basic, that shouldn't even be a question, because if we had money there, we'd be taking our contributions out of there like we normally would. Sheriff reimbursement fund has a hundred and seventy-six thousand. Not sure what he uses that for. The county disclosure, the disposal closure account fund, eight thousand. Not sure where that, who's in charge of that fund.
I think that's for like if we had to close the collections, I know the conservation. Carpenter, Aspen Rapids.
So that has the eighty-eight hundred in there. Local option, that has the one point two million. Secondary road, that's richest stuff. I'm sure he would do more bills if he had more money. Then you have the hundred and fifty thousand for the home health improvement fund. There's a sheriff state asset forfeiture fund. We have our insurance fund. A drug enforcement fund. There's a recorder resource enhancement protection fund. And recorder record management fund. Nothing in our capital projects. There is three thousand three from a debt service fund they must have had years ago. Under, almost two hundred thousand in conservation land acquisition fund. Kind of miscellaneous for all of our drain accounts. In the veins, we have six hundred. And then you have townships, corporations, schools, area schools, hospital. Ready spell carpenter sewer, vague extension.
Those are all clean out anymore.
So those numbers add up to what they are. So you show them, they come in and then they go out. So we can't really, and we can't touch like EMA, E nine one one, or accessor. Inside, I could be wrong, unless you can touch all those funds that are kind of obligated. Like if we could borrow from the general basic, that's kind of dumb, because we would have been paying out of the general basic from the get-go then. So I don't know. Unless someone has a different opening, or where it can come from out of those funds.
But that's, that's your, that's your department, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to invent something here. I just see a fund balance that is kind of questionable, that's all.
Yes, Amy.
Can you just make a comment?
Sure, yeah.
I think when you're looking at funding for the county, and Rachel, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you have your general basic, which normally is a three dollar and fifty cent levy. You have your general supplemental, which can only be used for certain things. Even though that levy is unlimited, there is a limit to what you're allowed to spend with the, the general supplemental. Then you have your rural basic, which is a three dollar and ninety-five cent levy. Those are your funds. And as Rachel said, you may have nineteen million dollars in the bank. But that's, that's adding all the departments, all the sub-funds, to total the nineteen million. But that's not what's available to the supervisors for spending. Does that make sense? Okay, that's all I had. Thanks.
Not much of an update, I just kind of wanted to go over that a little bit.
Thank you.
Like you said, you can do this without borrowing, you knew in the beginning, so. That kind of fell apart.
I haven't talked with them.
I haven't talked with them. Well, I know, that's in the beginning.
You look at me, there's, there's four others here, but I haven't talked with them.
Oh, I haven't either.
For that direction, yeah.
Okay, well, so, you know, that's what the plan was gonna be in the beginning, but yes.
So one bit about doing the internal borrowing was using local option to borrow and then repay? Is that the line that says the fund sinking fund, or where else does loss show up?
The nineteen thousand.
Nineteen thousand. Nineteen thousand. So there's.
It was a loss fund sinking fund.
But is it all obligated to future bond payments? Is that where it's set up as a sinking fund?
It used to be obligated for the jail, and it's just never been changed for title.
Title hasn't, okay. So that's one point two million dollars. And that increases every month, then decreases, there's a steady flow in and out. Yeah, it might be more helpful to know, to, to pull out, if you're able to run a report that shows, yeah, what are the funds available for spending for supervisors? And what are all these little trust funds and, and specially designated funds?
They're all labeled, I mean, but they don't get a fund balance, do they get a fund balance?
But, yeah, if you were able to just.
Yep. Lindsay.
Make a report that didn't list every single fund, and everybody just gets overwhelmed with, I don't even know what these things mean, or how they can be used.
But isn't that where you look to your budget? I mean, that's the budget. That's their budget, that's where you look, is to your budget.
Well, budget documents get pretty consolidated, and lots of things end up under charges for service or taxes, or whatever, and then get split out with how they could use. It's just, I'm looking at this, and then, yeah, I'm trying to figure out. You know, we, we had an actual column for trust funds, so that, and within that trust fund, they probably had fifteen different department trust funds, this and that. We just looked at that money, and it's, okay, you might think Park Department has eight hundred thousand dollars. Well, it's the park, and it's the, this and that and the other. So there's just lots of details that get consolidated into this report.
And the reason I ran all of them was just that it's that full amount, that's saving in the big pot.
Yeah, this is the fund balance, the, the annual report, which helped in Mitchell County, that they started pulling out. Yeah, you can do the special uses, and you get much more confined.
Right.
Although, just for reference, we do get, most counties will have just one big account. And then they can, they have the solutions programs, they can all out. And the auditor does not appreciate it, but historically, Mitchell County, known as a restricted fund, it has its own account. We have a bank account for every special fund. So they're all separated banking-wise and unfundling, so they don't attract interest. You don't have to tolerate interest and stuff, so that's nice. But it is separated on when they get the banking reports. We have them all, they know what they really are.
Yeah.
So that kind of filled with that a little bit.
So an education fee, so, yeah, there's four million dollars, but in that savings account, it might be, it's not a mixture of.
It's his and hers.
Yeah. Yeah. So understanding that would be important.
So looking forward, if there is not four million dollars, someone's gonna have to go get a loan from somewhere? That would be our responsibility to supervisors, or no, Rachel?
In the past, we did piss off it. I don't know, between the supervisors and the bond council, they want to do that. I help give them paperwork, except they need your paperwork that they request, and then they put together and do their thing.
Which is probably gonna take some time in doing. How much time do they have before?
I'm trying to think, so, I'm just looking at like the contributions. Obviously, the, I'd say the rural projects you aren't gonna need in July, when they give their money.
But the libraries.
The libraries they get paid, I wanna say in October, and M C D C is quarterly. I'll do the same thing after September, yeah.
The fair just got their second one.
Yeah, maybe theirs twice a year, I think theirs is October as well.
Sure, they want their money for the building, won't they?
Well, it'll be after the fair. Right? I don't, I mean.
Yeah, their, their, uh, building won't be delivered until after the fair, in September.
Is that, Todd, is that structured, that they like submit a pay request based on, okay, we've had this many cost, so now can I draw a hundred thousand dollars from our county commitment? And then when they get the big bill for the building, they can draw down for that?
Actually, I believe they have a loan right now, because they had to put some down when they ordered the bill. And trust, they, pretty sure, working with them, and then.
I thought they have the money to buy the building, the material, in their account. They had like two hundred and some thousand, I thought that's what they're gonna use for.
They borrowed the money to put down. And then they'll have to make the final payment on building delivery. That's just for the building that they ordered.
That's what the seven, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars is strictly the building?
No, that's the concrete and building.
Okay. You're tired here in the city of Osage, but we've also, we've done borrowing with local banks, or bank, for you guys' banks within the county. And, you know, that is more cost-effective in terms of the, the cost for issuing bonds. You don't have to go through all the paperwork. You have to do the legal paperwork to authorize the debt. But you don't have closing costs and all those other fees.
You don't have, you like, that's the equal call?
I think it is important, that's what I would say to that rating thing.
Yeah.
We've done some in the past.
Yeah, you don't have to do bond ratings and. Standard and quarters and movies and all those bond reading type things. And you could break it down into smaller chunks. Maybe a bank, you know, Sage is willing to loan you X amount of dollars for one particular project, or a combination of projects. And a bank in Stacyville, or a bank in Sedans, or wherever else there's a bank, you know, Riceville, to do that.
They're gonna do a general.
Your, your financial advisors, your Northlands, or whatever, can seek those bids for you from the local banks, that's what they get, earn their money for. But their fees are less when they don't have to go through all the hoops. So something to explore with those folks.
If you're doing a general, like, general obligation bond, whoever's doing the bond, whoever's, whoever we're buying the bond from, security company, they'll look at us more favorably if we have done an S and P, done that route. But you don't, you're not required to do that route.
If you're doing the actual general, issuing a general obligation bond.
You look more favorable if you do it, but it's not like it's a requirement.
I will agree with Rachel. One county staff. We have to get, hopefully, a good rating that will tell the people buying the bonds, that Mitchell County is reliable, and we should have no money, no trouble getting our money back.
We did that before, when we refinanced that one loan we went with Davidson. We sat down here and had that meeting with that gal from, oh, she's in New York in her apartment. And we did our ratings.
Dean Davidson.
Yeah, but we had that whole other, we went with them that time, instead of Northland, when we refinanced that one loan we had.
It's at a lower rate.
Yeah. But we had our ratings looked at that one time, and how long they're good for.
They wanna review it every time. Yeah, I mean, I, you, do you guys have a rated bond now? Do you get a call, a couple of calls every year to review the financial status of the county? And then they can change the rating. It's like, oh, Mitchell County's looking better now, we'll give them a higher rating. Or, ooh, maybe you took some money and we can't figure out, or, you know, there's less reserves. Then, then your rating drops to A one instead of A. And each company does a different type of rating, so you can have a rating for two different companies, and they aren't the same. But it's also kind of nice to establish a relationship with the person, the company, that's gonna do your bonding for you, so that they get a better sense of who and what Mitchell County is. And they don't have to ask the same questions over and over again, because they know the county, they know the structure, they know the people. Then that makes them more efficient the second time around, the third time around, the fourth time around with that. And if you don't, aren't satisfied with how it works, then you seek out someone else. But there, there are a lot of good people in that business. In Iowa, nearby, you don't have to deal with folks in Illinois, Kansas.
Depending on the people that we work with. So, not just Plant State, but I mean, Northland, too, but they can look at.
Yep, Northland, Spear, they have people in Waterloo that are really good, Dean Davidson.
So it's the next step, let's see if we can get four million internally, then, huh?
I can't remember what it sounds like.
There's a lot to seek elsewhere.
Yeah, I have a comment. You know, the first time Plant State came here, they told us, you know, you have excess in your tip fund. You can use that to fill your budget, you can use that without paying no interest. You can use it, use it, use it. And now, that's against the Iowa code to put it in your budget. You cannot just use it, you gotta go out and get a loan. I feel we've been misled. Because at first meeting, they were here, do all this stuff, and now it's all fell apart. So I feel all their information was not beneficial to us at all. Plus the amount of money they're charging us to do stuff that ain't working out, you know? That's. So I just feel they, they've misled us, so. So, anyone else feel that way? No, I don't feel that way. You don't? Well, everything they said we could do, we can't, so. I, I don't know. That's too bad. They took advantage of Mitchell County the way they do.
So we need to seek four million dollars somewhere, or what are we gonna do? Any ideas?
Yes, Shannon. Like Kathy said, can we piece out priority projects? And see if we can, could you do an internal loan, get us through the next budget?
You can probably agree, I mean, like the departments and.
It apparently does, you know, four million dollars isn't available internally.
But I mean, if it's smaller chunks, maybe. You could prioritize the department stuff.
Probably state auditor question or something, that, I mean.
D N Ls.
Well, yeah, you're gonna have to go to somebody that.
Right. Establish it legally, but if we kind of, if we can find out what we want to get done first.
Aaron, feeling capable of all that, or yet?
Just a thought, then we don't have to wait, and I, four million is the bigger number. What do we wanna pull out to prioritize to get through in the short term?
Plant State, of course, I don't know.
They don't get into doing the, selling bonds or seeking loans. They refer you to in Northland or Dean Davidson, the spear.
I know, if they do work to Osage, does Osage have trouble with them like this? I mean.
I get, I mean, I worked with Ron for thirty-eight years. So when Ron says you can do this, he means it is possible. It's not possible without going through the proper steps.
Yeah.
And maybe that's the disconnect in what he's saying, what you're hearing, that to be, and.
What you said in the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was very thoroughly audited every year. And we never had any auditors raise questions about the way that we use our tip funds, or, you know, did our internal loan, we didn't do so much internal loans. But we, our urban renewal plan got amended annually for spending for a variety of small items, like some of the requests that you've dealt with. And then we did our resolution, a lot of those were. A lot of those were set up as any of the appropriations. So every year, the council had to decide, "Yes, we're gonna make this bond payment," or "No, we're not gonna make this bond payment." Well, if it was humanly possible, we were obviously gonna make... They were gonna vote to do that because you don't wanna trash your credit rating for borrowing for streets and things like water and sewer, things that you need. Um, but it was... And then, you know, that appropriation resolution was done in November, and then that led to the certification to the county. This is the tip money that we want to receive in the next year or a budget year out.
Change it a year by year.
Yeah, yeah. We never had issues with any of that. And again, very familiar with how Ron and Kathy worked, so part of that is just my knowing what they were... Where they were headed and pulling in, um, the Northland or the... We actually ended up using a guy up in Minnesota.
Yeah, when they first came here and said all that stuff, I thought it was gonna be true. So I checked into it myself, and I found out that it wasn't true.
Yeah, and it's, you know, you can't just willy-ly go, "Okay, let's use this money for that," without the Urban Renewal Plan, without that debt certification and...
Yes.
But if you're looking for, "Can you do this?" Yes, you can if you follow these steps. And that's maybe not your aim.
It has been the contention of three people on this court to do that process. We're in the process to do it correctly, so...
And last week, John and Kathy sat here and said that they've gotten us this far. Their... Our next step is probably to reach out to John Danos, and they said they would help us do that. And it's a process, just like Kathy was saying.
And you definitely need bond counsel. They specialize in this. If you called John Danos today and asked him how many different tip or Urban Renewal things are on his desk, I'd hate to guess how many. You know, those two firms in Des Moines spend a lot of time. They have a lot of staff strictly dedicated to Urban Renewal.
John Danos does something like this. I talked to him, he says for flat $4,000, he'd do it all. Urban renewal, the whole thing.
Yeah. But he's gonna do it remotely from Des Moines. You know, so you lose that kind of personal contact. That's just a...
I've talked to him, I think he's...
Yeah, personal.
He knows what he's talking about.
Yep, oh, he definitely does. Yep, I work with John.
So there's... How much money into this already, and not one over's done, so...
What's our next step?
I just think we... Ron and Kathy get with John Danos and proceed the next step. I mean, they said that last week. So... I mean, that's what I heard out of him. I don't know what the rest of you heard, but everything was approved and, um... And that's basically what Ron said, that our next step would be to reach out to John Danos.
We need to probably tell them we're gonna get $4 million, though, aren't we? That's probably his first question, wasn't it?
Well, I just, for some reason, if we have a project fund started, there's that... That unobligated tip fund money out there.
It's not unobligated. Well, it's obligated to the $21 million worth of debt. It's not unobligated.
But it's obligated to a planned...
I talked to John, he'll explain what it is. So there's no such thing as unobligated. It's obligated, it's stiff, it's obligated to that. Otherwise, I'd be in the treasurer's office if it wasn't obligated. That's where it ends up.
So should we see if we need John on the agenda for next week? Or see what his questions are? Or what do you wanna do? We gotta do some, because we gotta come up with some money somewhere.
I think that'd be great, you know, stick John in the next steps for next week.
Put that on the agenda, Rachel, and see if we can... If he's available. Otherwise, I think we're gonna run out of time. I just wanna check with the local banks, see if they want to. Give us a loan? Do we wanna wait to see what John says, or what?
Can John do that for you? Check with the local bank? Or...
I don't know if...
Because he's still... He's still due the paperwork for it.
Yeah, so that it might be a... To, you know, a lot of times you want somebody that's doing your financial advising and then...
I don't know, he said...
You end up with conflict of interest if they try to do both sides of the paperwork.
Let's see what he says next week, and then we'll go from there.
I have an email proof of the banks in the county. When I have CDs, I send out a request for rates. So if he wants an email sent out, I already have all the contacts, but I would wait till John tells me. Yes. I'll bring over all the contacts if you need them.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay.
Check against his ideas, and go from there, I guess, so... Perfect.
All right.
We got everything but public comments. Any public comments? All right, none. So we're doing a meeting at 9:46 AM.